I call to order the May 8, 2017, Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
We have scheduled a 6:30 public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read past that.
Proposed ordinance item.
Sorry about that. See what happens when I don't bring my glasses. Okay, we have to have a 6:30 public hearing, so we have a proposed ordinance amending the Latrobe City Code to provide standards for tower and non-tower-based wireless communication facilities.
Yes, this matter's been before council for some time. We've had pending ordinance status for the better part of this year, so it's an item that's been debated by council in public quite often, so I won't -- I'll spare everyone and not go through our entire 30-something-page ordinance on this and kind of give the quick hit list on it, and then we can open it for public comment. This ordinance regulates -- updates our code as it relates to your traditional cellphone towers. Currently, we have pre-Spartan restrictions, regulations on your normal towers, so this code will bring our code up to date and make it a state-of-the-art ordinance. It also addresses cellphone towers or cellphone units, antenna, that are the new wave, and these are the smaller units that are placed on towers in the right-of-way, towers being phone poles, utility poles, light poles. Sometimes they're attached to the side of a building, so this provides two different ways for applicants to go forward. One is through the zoning hearing board, and then when it's in the right-of-way and it's a new use, a new pole that they want to construct, that'll be a right-of-way access permit that'll go through council, so you guys will be involved in that. This ordinance has been provided to the county as well as our planning commission for their review. Planning commission did submit some minor items for changes which were made. This ordinance has been available for public inspection, and this hearing was duly noticed and advertised, so at this point, I'd leave the floor open for any members of the public or council to comment.
Anyone have any public comments that they'd like to share, including members of council? Then I'll call the public meeting closed, and we will move on to the roll call.
Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mr. Murba?
Here.
Mrs. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolpert?
Here.
All present.
At this time, I would ask for approval of the minutes from the April 10, 2017 meeting.
I move the minutes of the April 10, 2017 meeting we approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second, please?
I second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would like a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of April 2017.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have the citizens' request portion of our meeting. This relates to agenda items only, so if you have anything you would like to discuss that is related to the agenda, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three to five minutes. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for open discussion. Any agenda item questions or discussion? Okay. Committee reports. Finance. We got nothing right now. Right, Julie Bright? Public safety?
We have scheduled a meeting for Monday, the 22nd, whatever the Monday is before an next agenda meeting, at 6 o'clock.
Personnel? I don't think we did have anything since. Oh, yeah, Jim, where are we on the civil service stuff?
I'm all finished testing, and I have the three top names. I'm gonna get interviews next week.
Wow, good for you. That moved pretty quick. Okay, good. Anything else? Events? I know you guys had a meeting, right?
I was unable to make it. Jack was unable to make it.
And so were you. Yeah, that's right. I remember. Okay.
I'll find out from Greg.
Any update on the department committee? Julie and Jack, did you meet with the school?
We did, and so we're aiming for -- it'll be quarterly half-year.
Half-year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
Yeah, so we're aiming for her to give us, like, nominations in the town bridge.
Okay.
And then we'll move forward from there, maybe interviewing the candidates or just to see what their background is.
Okay. Anything, any board and authority report updates? Skip, anything from LMAG?
Nothing new.
Parking rack, I mean, obviously, you guys know what's going on there, so. Okay, department reports. Mike?
Just two things. I think we talked about this at the agenda meeting. We had some problems, you know, with the detour from the bridge, you know, the traffic. Spoke to, you know, PennDOT. Basically, they did come in and do a study of all the detour, all the signage. Basically, they said everything was up to code, but they're gonna still continue to look at it to see if there's any changes that are gonna be needed or anything like that. The other thing was, I don't know if you noticed, I put some trailers around town, the digital speed monitoring devices. I'm gonna be changing those weekly in different locations, help reduce and slow down the traffic in those areas, so it seems like they're working so far, so we're gonna continue to just put them sporadically around the city.
Well, on the subject of the bridge, I had a couple, I wondered a couple of things, and if we could ask this of PennDOT, is whether, have they actually looked at the timing and the lights on 982, on Wood Avenue and Unity, and then the light out on, at the red light of Mission Road?
Yes.
They have?
They have looked at the one on Mission Road. I'm not sure about the one at Wood. Now, what I was told on the one at Mission Road is if they change the sequence to that, it's gonna back up further at Legionnaire and 982. And it's also gonna back up the traffic on Mission Road, which then only, I think they were saying about eight or nine vehicles would be allowed to go, and...
Yeah, I mean, sometimes that is backed up from the Mission Road light around the corner and down past Latrobe Steel. And then, and I actually got a phone call today from somebody that suggested, and this would be from Mike and Jim, 'cause I don't, you know, from four to six, or, you know, when it's the most heavily-traffic time, if we had someone from, if we had someone from the fire police at that intersection, Jim, you're shaking your head now before I finish my sentence. Obviously, you already thought about it, or someone already talked to you?
No, I've been monitoring it pretty well. I'll keep my report in check.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Mike. It's your turn.
To reiterate what PennDOT said, it would probably be fruitless to change any of the lights right now. Like, I expressed before that we need to have patience. I've been monitoring it. I stay after anywhere from 4:30 to 5:30, and that's about the worst times, from 4:30 to 5:30. That's one hour where it's backed up past Latrobe Steel, but when you think about the wait, it's not really that bad. I mean, it is an inconvenience, but it could be a lot worse. I think it should be left the way it is.
Okay.
Pending, you know, something tragic happening, or it just, you know, doubling what it is now, but the wait, the wait is less than four minutes.
What about, and I don't go, I don't, I don't go that way very often, but what about the one, 'cause, 'cause I got a phone call today from somebody that lives on Second Avenue, and they said that that traffic from Unity Street backs up the whole way past, I don't know, Mr. Beast, and I don't know if that's true or not, but...
It's heavy. Like, I come home, Donahue Road, and down, is that Second?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it has thinned out a little bit, people taking other ways, but it's gonna move. I mean...
I haven't monitored that, that way yet, but, I mean, you can, it's different, like, for directing traffic, if you're trying to get cars out of town, when you direct traffic, you can get them out of town, you can move traffic, but when they're coming both ways, it's difficult.
Yeah.
You have only so much space and so much time on the lights that it just, it reverses what you're trying to do if you try to drag traffic, because when you move people through, you have a gap, then they back up at the next light.
Correct.
So if you didn't have two people directing traffic, it wouldn't be worth it.
So, yeah, I said I'd at least ask a question.
I mean, it's...
President of the committee, but you haven't looked, you haven't really monitored the Unity City?
No, but the Mission Road, Eaton Road, Hillview Avenue, you're looking at possibly a four-minute wait at the most, and that's not bad for one lane of traffic on the other end of town.
Okay.
It's only, it's only down to, like, an hour, 4:30 to 5:30.
Well, this person told me that's true. That's where the big problem is, up on Second Avenue.
Well, you know, what are you gonna do? You got one lane, you know, we're gonna have to deal with it till it's finished. Unfortunately, that's a lot of people, you know.
They also told me that there's a lot of speeding going on Second Avenue, although now they think this might slow it down as well as the...
Well, there's a lot here there now.
Now, yeah, they, we...
Just moved that, just moved it today. We had it there. It was working very well, but like I said, every week, I wanna try to change it. Just on Joanne Drive, a lot of people were taking that as a shortcut to wrap around, so right around the bend of hospital parking lots, I put another unit there, you know, slow down traffic.
What else, Jim?
To get back to the hiring, excuse me, two weeks ago, we had the physical agility test. Last week, we had the written test on Saturday. I hired a company who provided the tests, and right after the test, you seal the envelope, civil service committee signs off on it, it goes to, straight to the people who correct it. I don't touch anything. I automatically get the results back in my email, they rank them, so it takes any question out of the correcting or the ranking. And that's why it was so fast. They guarantee 72 hours after they receive them, they'll have your results, so that's why it was quite quick. We're gonna have, we have, like I said, we have the three top candidates that we'll be interviewing next week. Anybody has any questions, glad to talk to you about it afterwards, or...
Just one question. How many applicants altogether did we have? I'm just curious.
We had 21 to begin with.
Really?
Oh, wow.
It went down to 10 after the physical agility, a few didn't show up and several didn't pass the physical agility, and then it went down to, I believe, seven after the written test, because they didn't achieve the 80 percent, a few didn't achieve the 80 percent requested or required by the civil service. We're, like I said, we're gonna do the interviews next week, so that list, according to civil service regulations, will be active for two years.
And didn't you change at this time, so you did the physical agilities first and then the written test?
I did that the last couple of times.
Oh, okay. And that works out better, huh?
Yes, it does. Then we'll find tests for people who fell for it.
Yeah, well, that's good.
So it's falling together pretty quickly. I'll have a name, I'll have a name for, after the interviews for the next council meeting that can be voted on.
And who does the interviews?
I do, and usually the city manager does. I didn't break that tune yet. I'm sure he'll find some time. Oh, his spare time. Yes.
Okay.
But the next thing, third thing, fire pits. I have about 16 complaints. Problem is, they're after the fact, and I tell the people that they have to call when it's happening, you know, they'll call the next day or three days later, and...
This may be a short-lived thing. I mean, we said if it's...
What kind of complaints? This smoke, too close to the house, things like that. I have the list and the addresses and the complaints, and who they complained on, so it's gotta be...
Is it 16 different?
Yes.
Places?
Yes. Correct. John, have you had any complaints?
No, like, actually, Jim, I have it. There must be people coming to you.
Okay. Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Bumner, anything else?
No.
Chief Brazile?
Just a few things. With traffic patterns, we kinda had an early start till our Saturday morning, we dropped it, made two wrong turns, so it kept Chief Bumner's guys and my guys and Mike's guys busy for a few hours.
That's what I heard.
Kinda interesting. Other than that, we, a little storm, what I call a little bit of a microburst come through, that kinda kept us in public work, some police running pretty good, too, with trees and some wires on. It got done, I mean, my most tried was the gentleman that kinda had the shed fire, so
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, that was tough.
Yeah, that was, that was probably the worst of the work, but definitely different. Like I said, everybody, everybody kinda worked together to get things done there, and that's...
You always do. You guys always do.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Dan?
Well, I just wanted to remind residents that if they do want the small recreational fire, they need to get a permit, and I don't know if some of these complaints were from, you know, because they didn't have permits and they weren't set up right, I don't know. I'll check his list.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we take his list and contact those people? Okay.
I mean, I've given out 25 permits already, so, but I see a lot more in yours that aren't permitted.
Well, and I'm telling you, we're gonna find them.
Yeah.
So...
Like, the ones that were there before we even started.
Probably.
Yeah, probably. We're gonna find them, we're gonna find them, so... Is that it? Dan? Okay, Zach? Moving on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 10A1, approving request and authorizing installation of on-street disability parking space at 123 Avenue D. Catherine Cantorius submitted a request for a handicap parking space in front of her residence. We have a resolution here before you entitled establishing a handicap parking space on Avenue D. We'll approve this if we approve it by way of resolution, but at the end of the year, we'll confirm it by way of ordinance, and it'll get adopted into the code book. So the appropriate action would be to approve a motion approving the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Command the motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Murba. Any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2017-18. Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert?
Yes.
Those seven, yes.
Item 10B1 is the ordinance amending the code of the city of Latrobe, providing standards for location, placement, construction, and maintenance of tower-based and non-tower-based wireless communications facilities. Since this ordinance was outlined during the public hearing, we'll dispense with that. However, I would like to note that the ordinance was provided to the county and our planning commission pursuant to the municipal planning code. Public hearing was held on it pursuant to the code, and it was duly noticed for action on tonight's meeting, so the appropriate action to take would be motion to approve the ordinance as outlined.
May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Beazey. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2017-8. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 10BC1 is a resolution authorizing the disposition of the 2009 municipal records of the administration finance department. Last year, we adopted the updated municipal records manual as amended in 2009. This disposition of records would be pursuant to the schedules and regulations in that handbook. So what the appropriate action to take would be to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
Make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2017-19. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Murba?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert?
Yes.
Those seven, yes.
Now, the last item is 10C2, authorizing the solicitor to prepare an ordinance designating permit parking only on the second of West First Avenue. This item was put on the agenda even though there wasn't any firm commitment at the agenda session. Essentially, property owners on that street are having issues parking due to their proximity to the hospital. The motion that we've prepared would be a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance designating the southerly side of West First Avenue from the west side of the intersection at Joanne Drive to 1.105 feet west as permit parking over.
May I have a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
May I, thank you, Mr. Bartels. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. Any questions for discussion? I think we talked about this at the agenda program. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it for agenda items. Unfinished business. Anyone have anything they wanna discuss under unfinished business? New business? All right, I have some new business. This is one of the, one of my favorite things to do is recognize our city employees. You know, we are, Latrobe's a great community, and I think we all agree to that, because that's where we choose to live and raise our families, but what makes it so special is the people who work here every day to make sure that we're safe and that we have access and clean streets and clean roads and access to all the things we need to have a good quality of life. So tonight, we have three employees who have been with us for a few years, and we'd like to recognize them, so why don't we all go down there?
Lay over here. Afraid to shake.
Bill, would you please come over here? William L. Barr, in recognition of 20 years of excellent service as a heavy equipment operator for the city of Latrobe Public Works Department. Bill was hired on July 7, 1997, and this year, on his anniversary date, he will reach 20 years of service. The city of Latrobe would like to express our sincere appreciation for his many years of dedicated, dependable, and exceptional service to this community. Thank you, Bill.
Likewise, I assure you.
Officer Kessler? Police Officer Ronald Kessler, in recognition for 15 years of outstanding service as a police officer for the city of Latrobe Police Department. The city of Latrobe extends our sincere appreciation and recognition to Officer Kessler for his loyalty, selfless bravery, and honorable service to this community. Congratulations, Ron. Thank you. I have one more, and he's not here. Chief, would you mind coming up and taking this for, um, Rod? I know you're not, but... I'm sorry, Ray. Told you what happened, I can't, I don't have my glasses. Police Officer Ray Swiderski couldn't be here. He's out of town. So, in recognition for 15 years of outstanding service as a police officer for the city of Latrobe Police Department, the city of Latrobe extends our sincere appreciation and recognition to Officer Swiderski for his loyalty, selfless bravery, and honorable service to this community. And I'll ask Jim to pass this on to Officer Swiderski. Thank you. Thank you very much. You're all wonderful citizens, so I really appreciate all you do every day, so thank you. I'd ask for everyone to stick around afterwards. We're gonna have a little refreshments over there to recognize our employees, so please stay and join in. Any other items of new business? Any citizens' requests? Anyone wanna talk about anything else? Cool. City manager's report?
Just real quick, we opened up bids for the roof for the firehouse improvements. It's in the budget. Bids came in a little bit below what we had budgeted, it was always good. It'll be on the agenda for council's approval to award it at later.
I'm gonna do the manager's report. I just want to, you know, again, ask everyone to just be patient. I know it seems like a long time till November, but you know how fast summer goes, so enjoy your summer, be careful, go slow, watch for the kids. School's gonna be getting out here in a couple of weeks, so there'll be a lot, a lot of young ones running around, riding their bikes, so I ask everyone to be alert, be aware, and to please slow down. A lot of things coming up this summer. We have, you know, obviously, and I'm gonna forget something, so if somebody thinks of something, remind me, but, you know, of course, Mother's Day's next week, but Memorial Day, and then June 10, we have the Mr. Rogers Day, July 4, we have our Fourth of July celebration, and then Banana Split Festival, and it's gonna be here and over before we know it, so... I know, it is, though! Oh, Relay for Life is in June. Uh, the chief has, that's June 9th is the candlelight vigil at Creekside.
When's the electronics pickup?